Tim, have you heard from Turkin at all?
We will begin in just a few moments. We're just waiting on one board member. It's Monday, November 10th, 2025. The time is 6:02 PM and this meeting of the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency Board is now called to order. Let's proceed to the invocation led by Board Member Hay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Kelly. Let's all stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal God and our Father, we pause at the start of this meeting to say thank you. Thank you for this day. Thank you for life, health, and strength, and for the privilege to serve the people of this great city of Boynton Beach through this CRA board. Lord, in this month of Thanksgiving, November, we don't take your blessings for granted. We thank you for progress made in getting our government in the process of reopening, for the partnerships formed, and for every opportunity to make our country stronger, safer, and more vibrant. God, we ask your guidance this evening. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that upbill our neighborhoods, compassion to consider our residents' needs, and unity to work together for the good of all. Bless now our chair, our board members, our staff, and all who labor behind the scenes for the success of this agency. And as we approach Thanksgiving Day, may our hearts overflow with appreciation for your grace, your mercy, and the many ways that you have kept our community. We ask it all in the name of Jesus our Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Let me turn to our Deputy City Clerk Tammy Stanzioni. If you could please begin the roll call.
Chair Shelton?
Present.
Vice Chair Hay?
Present.
Board Member Kelly?
Here.
Board Member Cruz?
Here.
Board Member Turkin?
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We are now moving on to additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda. Let's begin on my right. Board Member Cruz, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
None from you, Chair. Thank you.
Board Member Hay?
I have none.
Board Member Kelly?
Um, no. Legal, are you, did you add that to, is it already added? Because I know it wasn't on the one I reviewed earlier.
Yes, so staff and legal have three recommended changes when you all are done.
I'd like to move up 15G to after 10.
Okay, where do you want to move it?
To after public comment.
Okay. And then Catherine?
Staff would like to make an amendment to consent item 11N to add a motion to approve a waiver to the construction deadline and allow the grant recipient 180 days from the board approval to complete the project and some writ for reimbursement. And we would also like to amend item consent item 11P to include the attachment of the final Second Amendment to MTI to extend the site plan approval to April 1st, 2026. That attachment has provided, been provided to you on the dais.
Okay.
In addition, legal would request the addition of a new item under 15G as the agenda was published. This is in response to the board's request that we contact affiliated and BBQOZ about the parking situation. We were able to coordinate over the weekend, and so on the dais you have a Fourth Amendment amended, amendment to the purchase and development agreement. And if you accept this item, I can talk you through the specifics at that time.
Want to add that to make it 15H?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to legal. Counselor, are there any legal items you'd like to discuss?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Let's now begin informational items and disclosures by board members and CRA staff, starting with Board Member Turkin.
Nothing to disclose. Thank you, ma'am.
And Board Member Kelly?
Uh, the only, my only disclosure is that I did speak with affiliated with regard to the parking with 15H.
Okay. Board Member Hay?
No, not for me.
Board Member Cruz?
None for me.
And none for me. Thank you. Now, let's look at items under information only. Are there any information only items my colleagues would like to discuss? If no items, we can move on to announcements and awards.
Chair, can I ask one quick question? Tim, when does our circuit, when is our circuit contract renewal so that we can talk about, you know, expansion or what our options are? Do we know?
I believe it's February of '26.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to announcements and awards.
Good evening, Board. Mercedes Coppin, Business Development Manager. I am very excited to announce and very proud of our agency that we were awarded a 2025 Bronze Excellence Award from the IEDC for our special event, the Boynton Beach Night Market, and that is for the 2024 Night Market. Our staff was acknowledged and honored at the IDC Annual Conference in Detroit, Michigan earlier this year. And every year, IEDC looks specifically for economic development organizations, government entities, initiatives, and programs that have demonstrated consistent exemplary performance in the economic development profession, leading the execution of projects that have a significant impact on revitalizing our communities. So this year, there were 450 entries across 200, oh, sorry, 26 unique categories with 191 organizations receiving this distinguished award. And based on the feedback that we received from the judges, we received this, the honor because of our innovation and unique approach to supporting businesses and engaging the community with the night market. So that said, I just wanted to share that with you all, and this is our award right here.
All right, all right.
Okay, moving right on to snapshots with Santa. Can't believe it's this time already, but here we are. For this festive innovation, we are going to be bringing holiday cheer to three different locations throughout the CRA area on Thursdays in December. So on December 4th, December 11th, and December 18th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, we will be bringing Santa along with holiday cheer to the plazas. Families can come out and enjoy family, oh, sorry, free photos with Santa. We have a professional photographer that will be coming out. We'll also have a DJ, and we'll be promoting the businesses within each of those locations during that, those activations. We'll be encouraging people to take advantage of various Boynton Beach buck offers to support the businesses, and we're just going to be out there spreading some holiday cheer. So we're hoping to see you all.
Is it dog friendly?
Absolutely.
Can the Deputy Mayor come and get her picture taken with Santa?
Yes, we would love to have you at any of those activations. We're encouraging people to bring out all of their children, their little dog children as well, their baby, yes, all of them.
The tradition, the Chihuahuas with Santa, so it's gonna happen.
We look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is public comments. So if anyone would like to speak, come on down to the podium. I'm gonna read this anyways. The public comment section of the meeting is for public comment on all items on the agenda or items that are not on the agenda. Each speaker would be given a total of three minutes to comment on all items on the agenda. However, the board retains the right to increase or decrease three-minute limit prior to the start of public comment. Each public speaker shall be given the same number of minutes unless it becomes necessary to terminate a speaker's comment in order to maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum in the public meeting. Persons making public comment may not assign or donate their public comment time to an individual to allow other individuals additional time to comment. However, any person's requiring assistance to be accommodated as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Prior to addressing the board, speakers present at the meeting will go to the podium to make their comments, and speakers participating virtually will unmute their device at the time. Speakers may be asked to state their name and address for the record. Any person may provide written comments to the board prior to the meeting. That being said, if anyone would like to public comment after that whole thing, feeling like an auctioneer up there saying that, "Come on down."
Come on down.
Hi, good evening. My name is Francisco Rojo. I am with Lammer Companies, and I am here to speak on an item regarding a project called City View. We, this board, we're very thankful for the assistance this board has provided so far. In July of this year, the board provided, we've been working on a development called City View that is for seniors housing. It's to be, the proposed location is Fifth Avenue and Federal Highway. We, the CRA board provided a commitment for us to then seek funding from the county, and the commitment for the county fund, the commitment was in the form of $3.75 million in connection with the construction of this mixed-use development. For the residential part is for seniors. We applied to funding, to Palm Beach County for funding in August of this year, and we currently are not recommended for funding. We have spoken to county staff who we're very familiar with. We've done four or five different projects in Palm Beach County, and this housing office has assisted with a good number of them. The, the reasons that were not recommended for funding, the primary reason is the county staff feels that the request is on the high side, and they have asked us to, this is a project that they're very much in favor of, and they've asked us to speak before the commission at a meeting that was just rescheduled. It was planned to be on November 18th, and it's been rescheduled for December 2nd. So it's a BCC meeting. At that time, they're going to consider all the various projects that applied for funding. There is, there is sufficient funding to fund all of the projects that applied for funding. So unusual to this business, we're not seeking for them to provide funding at the expense of another project. That's not what's, what's at play here. They've asked us to come and advocate, and one of the, the reason why I'm here before you tonight is the, the head staff person from the county has said that it is critical for us to show, to have assistance from the CRA to show presence there, speak at that event. We will, at that BCC meeting, I will be there to speak. There'll be some other folks. This is a project we're doing together with the West Palm Beach Housing Authority. They'll be there. But what I've been told is very important, is to have some presence from elected officials or from folks from the CRA board, or by the way, and also CRA staff to be present, because each one of us will just get two minutes to speak, maybe a little bit more. If they like us, they'll allow us to speak some more. So they have also, county staff has also advised me that the BCC has taken action and funded projects that are not recommended. So they said, "Look, we assigned a review committee. It's not the county staffers that are viewed. It is some other review committee that came up with some criteria to establish a particular score they wanted applications to have." So what they said is, "Come on down. Please have support from your CRA board members and our staff," and that's why I'm here tonight. I try to keep to your three-minute limit.
What else for public comment?
And I wanted to say, one thing. I also drafted, in recognition of the fact that this is a day event, the, the, the BCC meeting, I also drafted a letter that I sent to staff for your review, which is a support letter that would say, "Hey, we are providing assistance. We support develop, this development. You know, we encourage you to please vote favorably on this item." So that's not on the agenda, but I provided it to staff, and it's for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Diane Andre. I am a future prospective tenant for the heart of Boynton Shops, and I'm here tonight because it's on the agenda, and I kind of wanted to give you an update as to how the project is going. I and any other tenants are excited about the project, but the project has not been without delay in stalls. And our, or my ask here tonight is that the board would consider some additional funding if they see fit for it. But the tenants have all been in communication. We are excited about the project, but it has not, it has not come to this point without a lot of stalls, added costs, and other things that weren't considered at the onset. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration, and I thank the CRA for this project and getting it to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Good to see you all again. My name is Dr. Jasmine Pierre, and I'm here on behalf of Expedited Health, which we anticipate, hope, will also be at the heart of Boynton Shops. To piggyback on what Diane has said, there has been a lot of delays and stalls, but in particular, the cost of construction have been significantly high. I can say for myself, for my own personal unit, they were so high in comparison to initially projected numbers that we were using for our initial planning, that we were supposed to actually be two units, and we've now cut down to just using one of the units to try to cut the costs. But with that, unfortunately, the costs have not proportionately also dropped as, as much. And so, you know, with just the inherent nature of building a medical facility, you know, there's x-ray, there is, you know, lead lining, the medical plumbing, and all of that, the costs are just really, really high to do this shell space. And so I know there are other tenants that are here today to speak on that, but as far as building an urgent care facility, you know, additional funding would help us to see the project to completion, not just for our business, but also to just provide, you know, high-quality healthcare access to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is John LeJune. I am one of the restaurants going into the heart of Boynton. Just want to first off, thank you guys for your support. Thank you to the CRA team, specifically Bonnie, who's been extremely helpful and a great project manager. I, we've been at this now since 2022. We've been, us particularly, we've been paying on loans since 2023 for this project, and as you know, it still hasn't come to fruition. And so costs have, as everyone has already stated, costs have increased as far as construction goes, and just the overall delay of the project has been problematic. But we are still optimistic about what this can become. The community has shown a lot of interest in us opening our second location here. So, you know, we're excited, but as everyone stated, like, there is concern when it comes to the actual build out of the space. And from what we thought it would be to what it is now, it, it hasn't quite materialized. So we're just asking you guys to consider any, any additional support for this project would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Mike Jean-Baptiste. I'm joined by my wife, Dr. Allison Jean-Baptiste as well. Um, we're dentists, everyone's favorite, just kidding. Um, but wanted to thank you all for the opportunity. Um, we are hoping to join the team as well. Um, and much like my colleagues were saying, we are, um, experiencing some unanticipated extra costs. So if you could, um, find it in your heart to check and see if there's anything available, that would help out because we're really excited about it. Um, it's something that has been a dream for a long time. Um, not to get emotional about it, but we definitely would love to have your support in any way we can, um, to make our dream come true for the community.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Please come down.
Thank you again. This is Sylvia Gillian with Gillian and Co. Realty, Gillian and Co., you know, all of those attached. I am also one of the tenants at the hearts of Boynton. Um, I'm here today pretty much to request a, an extension as well, more time to, um, finish the build out of my, my office and ask all the other tenants advise. We do need additional funding if possible. Um, we are almost there, but some of the cost is more than what we expected. So I'm here to ask if you guys can consider additional funding and an extension to complete our build out. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come on down now before we go to online.
Good evening.
Can you speak? Can you speak? Yeah. That's on. Thank you.
Good evening. Lori Fisher, 457 Northwest First Ave. And, uh, C R A's moving on the hotel and the rest of the street. And I wanted to come to the meeting and see what's going on with it. And, you know, just to say hi, I'm here and I'm interested. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
If there's no other ones, we're gonna move on to online. Anyone? Yeah, if you want to speak, come to the podium so we can keep it moving. Yeah, it's fine. You still, you have three minutes, no worries. I just, we'd like to have people line up.
My name is Robert Adamkewitz. We live at the, um, 205 Northeast Third Street. So next to the big construction that's going on right now. So my main concern is as a, as a board member and somebody that lives there often on is the noise. The early morning starts with the cement pouring. I mean, it's been just out of control. We losing tenants, we losing owners that are complaining constantly. It's a fight and struggle with the parking lots, you know, trucks pulling in all over the place, destroying our grass and all around our building. I mean, we just have concerns about that. Like, is there's gonna be some kind of help afterwards when the construction's finished? Are they gonna clean up? Are they gonna replace our grass, you know, help us out a little bit financially, uh, as far as the building goes? I know you guys probably gonna pave the road and do all sorts of things in front of the building, but like, you're gonna beautify the building, but can you help us out a little bit? Maybe clean up afterwards, you know, spend some money and clean up around our building and help us out with the landscaping? Does that, that sort of thing? That's what entertain us. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go online? Going once, going twice? Okay. And, and it.
Here, there is, um, Julianne Mangiano or Mangiano, um, online. If she would unmute and she can start when she.
Hi.
Hi, I'm just listening in.
Julianne, can you hear us?
I believe she. I T, is she, uh, still online? Now she's showing red, so. I can't see him through the glass.
Can't either.
If I may offer the board through the captioning, it appeared that she said that she is just listening in.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
There's no other, no, the only other person online is from Circuit. I wanna work.
So we moved 15 G up. So next item for discussion and consideration is the discussion and consideration of the C R A Executive Director Services Contract. Uh, Ms. Rosma, can you open the item, please?
Yes, thank you, Board Chair. Um, as you all are aware, in July, the board directed staff to issue a request for proposals to seek qualified parties to serve as the executive director of the C R A. Following that procurement process, the board selected R M A to negotiate a contract with the C R A. So we are bringing that contract before you here tonight for your consideration. Um, and so I would like to take the opportunity to walk the board through the main portions of the contract. Mr. Brown from R M A is here as well to answer any questions that you have. Um, and then from there, we'll take your direction as to how to proceed.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so beginning, I'm just going to talk through, uh, the contract in sort of basic terms. If you have any questions, please let me know. And if you'd like me to do a more full read of the contract at any point, please let me know. Um, so this contract would become effective upon the last signature or upon today, whichever occurs later. So to the extent there's any adjustment of terms tonight, um, you can make this approval if you choose to approve, subject to legal review and we can finalize for signature. The term of the contract would be for two years and it is subject to one year of renewal at the board's option. Uh, the board will have the right to amend. The first year cost would be $400,000. The cost for the second year would be $412,000. And if the board chose to renew, the cost for the third year would be $424,360,000. I'm sorry, $424,000,360. Um, that would be to provide the executive director services. This more specific list of those services is set out as an exhibit, but it does encompass the things you would ordinarily think of as an executive director, providing direction, oversight, management of staff, um, those, those things that you're used to receiving. Um, in addition, the C R A would reimburse R M A for R M A's employees to provide, um, to attend certain professional conferences, including the Florida Redevelopment Association Conference, which I know a number of you attend or have attended in the past. It would apply to the executive director and to any other employee of R M A that came to have full-time employment at the C R A, as I'll, I'll detail slightly more later. Um, at present, the person serving as the executive director would be, uh, Mr. Christopher Brown, who's here with us tonight. It is his intention, as we understand it, to serve temporarily to get to know the C R A and then to work with R M A to bring in a, um, longer-term, a permanent executive director. Um, and, and Mr. Brown would continue with some level of oversight. The management would include management of current and future C R A staff. If a C R A staff member were to resign, um, the contract before you, as it is stated, says that R M A will either fill the position with an R M A employee or leave it vacant. However, in further discussions with Mr. Brown today, um, Mr. Brown has indicated that he would, and he will correct me if I take his position incorrectly, um, but that he, we could adjust the contract language such that if a C R A employee who is currently employed by the C R A wished to seek a promotion when a spot became vacant, they would have the option to do so either as a C R A employee or to become an R M A employee. And it would be the employee's choice as to whether or not they wanted to take that. So it, to put it, to put it in a slightly different way, should a vacancy come up, it would be current C R A employees and R M A employees that would be eligible for that position. If they, if that change is something that you all would like to consider. Um, as it stands in the contract version before you, it's just that R M A fills the position. Um, the, and again, please stop me if you have questions. Yes.
Do we discuss now or we wait till the end?
At your, at your, at your pleasure.
Yeah, I have some questions about.
Yes.
About that. Uh, am I hearing that if there's an open position that if there's someone in-house can apply for that job and get that job?
Yes, sir.
Okay? But they become a member of R M A?
As Mr. Brown and I discussed, it would be that employee's option as to whether they wanted to seek that promotion and stay a C R A employee, a public employee, or whether they would like to seek that promotion and see if R M A would be interested in hiring them so they would work for R M A but fill that position. So it would give that employee the choice as to whether to stay a public employee or become an R M A employee.
Good, but at the employee's choice?
At the employee's choice, yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, thank you. What about the cost of that? Because if we were to do on a hypothetical sense, we had a budget for a government employee for X number of dollars and then R M A were to procure that, I'm not gonna assume that it's gonna be more expensive to go through R M A for the same service if it was an internal employee, but that's potentially what could happen. So how do we determine the financials of how much it would cost the C R A to have, uh, an employee promoted versus an employee promoted into being an R M A employee?
So any additional, uh, personnel would require a contract amendment and that would come before the board. So it would undergo kind of the ordinary negotiation process that we undertake for any contracts. Um, I don't know if Mr. Brown has different insight into that, but that is how we would approach it from a contract perspective.
I would, I would like, hi, Chris Brown, if you like my address, I'm, I'm at 218 Northwest Ninth Street in Delray Beach. I always like to say I'm 15 minutes from City Hall. But any case, uh, it, every, we, we manage other CRAs. For example, in the West Palm Beach C R A, every city C R A employee came over and went to work for us. So it's, they wanted to work for us. Uh, that was their choice. We gave, we gave them that choice. Uh, so it sort of differs. And I think in terms of the salary, we have, we would, we would keep within the range of whatever the salary is for that position that's established by the C R A and/or the city. So we don't go beyond that. If the salary ranges, let's just make a hypothetical between 50 and 70,000, then we wouldn't go beyond the 70,000. So we're, we're hemmed in by the, by, by the, by the, by the standards of the C R A salary ranges for a particular position. So I don't think you have to worry about that.
Thank you.
Now, very frankly, why do people want to? Sometimes people want to drift over, over to our, our side. You know, we're a private company. We manage a lot, we manage other CRAs, but we also have a lot of other jobs all over the state of Florida. It's, it's kind of exciting. So it's, it's just, it's up to them though. So I'm not gonna force them to have to join R M A. But you have some wonderful staff and I think it's a good question. I don't know which, which, uh, board member asked that, but it's an excellent, uh, excellent question.
I have a question. Um, under C R A vacancies, it says if a C R A staff member resigns. Oh, I, that's what you were talking about. So they could, we could keep them or let them go. Okay.
Catherine, did you have more you wanted to go over?
I, I do.
I don't have any comments. I'm, I'm okay for her to continue the next one.
And, and please just, just interrupt or we'll take however you'd like to handle it. Um, in terms of place of work, it would be anticipated that all employees, so C R A and R M A would be full-time in person. It's not a remote position. In terms of staff policies, uh, whether it's a C R A employee or an R M A employee, they would of course be required to follow public records, procurement, those type of public facing policies. However, in terms of employment, R M A employees would be subject to R M A employment rules and C R A employees would be subject to C R A employment rules. As makes sense, you follow your own boss's employment procedures. Um, C R A staff from R M A will be present at board members, at board meetings as necessary and appropriate to the position. R M A represents that it has the knowledge and understanding to fulfill this work, to follow the statutes and, and to properly represent the C R A in this role. And it is offering access to key personnel, um, that R M A has to assist the C R A uh, with, with certain projects. In terms of the actual personnel provided, R M A has the ability to substitute persons. As we talked about, Mr. Brown would be seeking a more permanent director for the C R A. Um, the C R A does have the ability to approve or disprove of such substitution. Um, so while R M A does fill the role, it is subject to some control by the C R A.
Catherine, real quick, just, um, on that, kind of on that subject. So in that, um, search, so it kind of goes back to, um, the financial aspect of it. Um, so when, and maybe it's to Chris also, but when you're seeking, uh, a more permanent executive director, you know, we have our budget line item and I know this is kind of one of those temporary, kind of, we needed to, you know, we need to get staffing in, we need to get some balls rolling and we, and we really wanted you to come in and guide us. But I just want to make sure that, um, we don't end up being in a position where we then have a permanent executive director and our budget line item doubled. Um, so I'm just wanting to just get some clarification on, I'm, I'm, I'm imagining, but I don't want to just assume that the $400,000 contract agreement is inclusive, um, of many different things. It's Chris Brown's services as well as the salary for a more permanent executive director when, and when that time comes. So I just want for clarification.
Sure. The contract is for $400,000 to be paid, uh, monthly in, in a figure that's 400,000 divided by 12 for the first year, so around $33,330 and some change. Um, and that is the fee for filling of the executive director position, regardless of which person is in that seat. And then it, it changes, you know, the next year to be the increase again, divided by 12, so payable monthly in an equal amount. Um, and as they are transitioning someone in, there is no additional fee that is allocated for that purpose. Now, there are some additional services and we'll discuss that in a minute. And those things that are outside the executive director contract would be an additional fee. Um, but in terms of strictly filling the executive director seat, it is one fee.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Sort of. I guess my concern is, let's say there's an executive director that is found to be in this position where at, after year three, and then are we then still continuing? Let's say this executive director then stays on and we extend it. Are we then, are, are we now changing the salary is what I'm asking to 400 plus thousand for the executive director position is what I'm asking? Because it makes it sound, the way you're explaining it, makes it sound like that's what we're getting into. And I, I, my understanding is that this is more of a temporary agreement as far as this amount. But then later on, let's say this executive director stays on at year four and year five, are we now changing our complete budget line item for the executive director position to now be 400 plus is my question.
Okay. So I think there are several questions in there and so I'm, I'm gonna do my best to address them. Um, this contract is for three years with R M A. So at the end of that contract, we would go through, again, whatever procurement process would be appropriate at the time to fill that position, um, which could include reappointment of C R A. The executive director will remain an R M A employee. If the C R A were to hire away the executive director, there is a fee to be paid equivalent to 180 days worth of, um, that person's salary to R M A. So, and there is a, a general, um, agreement in here that essentially the C R A and R M A won't poach each other's employees for a certain period of time without paying that penalty. So it is, the employee does not become the executive director of the C R A, employed by the C R A. They remain an R M A employee. And if we were to hire them, then there would be a, a payment of fee associated with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Um, is, are, is everyone comfortable moving?
No.
So.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, I, I'm just gonna try to make this as simple as possible, asking this question. The $400,000 when, and if Chris decides he no longer wants to fill the role as executive director, there's no additional cost in him filling that with somebody else? Yes or no?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's all I need, thanks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm corralled by my number that I made in my proposal. I can't go beyond that. Now, at the end of the contract, then it's, you know, it's a, it's a different situation.
So at the end of the contract, Chris Brown appoints who he wants to be the executive director of that company?
No, sir. During the course of the contract, at this moment, Mr. Brown anticipates locating an executive director for you that would serve in a more permanent capacity. So it's part of his intention to fill the role of executive director now and almost act like an interim in that he wants to find a more permanent, um, person to fill the role of executive director. That person would continue until the end of this contract or if.
To the end of that contract, but after that contract, time expires.
After that contract, time expires. It will be up to this board what it would like to do. It could seek to rehire R M A, it could go out to R F P, it could, it, this, this contract is for three years. After that, it will be the board's decision and, you know, potentially with R M A, if they'd like to continue this relationship.
We will not be locked in to the 400,000.
No.
Not at the end of the contract.
Until the end of the contract and then it's up to us to move forward, whatever salary we set.
Uh, while the contract will be expired at that point. Well, the contract will be expired at that point. So yes, you could certainly seek a different executive director at a different salary or you could seek to potentially move forward with RMA further. You could go back out to RFP. It'll be it'll be completely in the board's control again at the end of the contract.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. This contract is RMA's specifically not providing the following services, including legal, engineering, human resources, city planning, technology, and risk management. Your executive director currently doesn't provide those services. It's just clarifying that. In terms of additional services, RMA may seek board approval under the draft of this contract to provide additional services to the CRA. RMA is a multifaceted company, so they have other services that they provide besides management through providing an executive director. Right now, the contract is drafted such that if RMA would like to secure other work from the CRA, that has to come back before the board for approval. Some examples include drafting a CRA plan, as I know that's been an item of discussion with this board, looking at parking studies, creating designs for certain properties the CRA may have. I mean, there's a variety of things that RMA could seek to potentially do. Again, I'm going to I'm going to represent a conversation that I had with Mr. Brown earlier. He'll correct me if I get it wrong. I believe that he would like some authority to secure work for RMA outside of board approval up to an amount of of your choosing. And that will be up to the board to decide whether they would like for all additional RMA work to come before the board, whether they'd like projects of a certain size.
Yeah. As discussed at the last meeting, I believe, and I don't know if we still have consensus, but I wanted to make sure that any any and all additional work done by RMA in order to control funding and making sure that we limit and we're very responsible with taxpayer dollars is that it comes back to the board for approval for anything additional.
Thank you, Chair. For me, I think right now, if we were to move forward without any changes, it would follow the procurement code of the city, which is up to $75,000 for that contract administrator. I'm okay to allow some. I'm not okay to allow that 75,000 for RMA, just not that I don't trust you, Chris, or anything like that. It's just then we allow, you know, essentially a $75,000 debit card monthly for RMA, you know, to put it in plain speak. However, comma, I do think it's important that there may be some housekeeping items, some administrative things that we do need to look at where it doesn't need to come to board's discretion every single month, right? We went through this with the with the city manager where, you know, we were getting road blocked because there was a member of the commission that wasn't responding, wasn't signing things, and then the city went on halt. We can't allow that to happen, especially we're trying to move this CRA forward and and really strike our strategic vision. So I'm okay with, you know, maybe $10,000. And then everything outside of that would, you know, I would feel more comfortable to come before this board. So I understand. The CRA plan also, you know, for for me, I feel like that's, you know, we're bringing we're bringing you on because you have these expertise. So I don't know why we would need to pay an outrageous cost for a bid for a CRA plan. This is what you guys are professionals in. Essentially, you could take our current our current CRA plan, get gather input from the community, from us, and, you know, hell, you could run it through AI and make those changes, right? And and, you know, essentially, we don't we don't need to pay $300,000 when we have the expertise here, because I think that's what we have budgeted for the CRA plan is $300,000 if I'm not mistaken. And so I just don't see the use of bidding that out and spending $300,000 when we have the experts here. So I understand that you guys want to have control on and handling that, and I want I want you guys to be a part of that. However, I don't want to pay $300,000 when I don't think that that cost suffices because you guys have the expertise. And for $400,000 a year, we're bringing in a firm, you know, this is all you guys do. This is what you guys focus on. So CRA plan should be, you know, elementary, in my opinion, for the scope of work, especially coming on board. So I know that's a I know that's a lot, but I'm pretty firm on that.
Mr. Turken, I can I can sort of guess that it's not going to cost 300,000. I don't know what it would cost because I it depends on the complexity of the CRA. We've done plans from we did a plan for the city of Sarasota for 125,000. We're working on another plan for Lakeland. It's 317,000. So it just depends on the complexity of it. I would like to go back to the 75, and you went to 10. I'd like to see if you would compromise. And but let me give him my speech of why I want to have the contract administrator. We have a contract administrator in another CRA, which is Pompano Beach. It's the city manager. So what happens is that when we want a small contract with somebody, we we have the city manager who has $75,000 limit. And so we don't have to wait months and months for procurement to get a small contract. 10 is a little small. I would offer it at 50,000. I'm trying to speed up the process so we don't have to wait to come to the board every time we want it. That's all.
I have some concerns. The difference with the city manager is he is a city employee. You guys are a private firm. There is a difference. You guys are a company that are a for-profit company versus an employee of the city or when we used to have an executive director. Go ahead.
No, finish now. Start it to finish.
The reason why we we like to have the city manager be the contract administrator is that he's really kind of the most trusted employee of a city. He's your city manager. He's he's really the chief executive. And so he's the one you really trust. And so and we get along with all of our contract administrators in other CRAs. So that's why I suggested in this one. And I know Mr. Duggar, and he's fantastic. It'd be very easy to work. He's not going to let me do something that's going to hurt the city. He'll be very protective of the city.
So I agree with that the contract administrator should be the city manager. I've talked to Dan. He wants to take this on, and he's here every single day where there's no waiting, you know, on, you know, someone to sign or authorize anything. Also, too, he's a city employee, right? So we entrust him to make the right decisions. Not that I don't trust Dan. I just don't, again, I don't want to give that authorization on both sides. And so I just can't I can't I can't swallow that. I would need to look at what I would need to look at what these things would be, right? Before, you know, again, handing the debit card for another $50,000 for RMA monthly, right? I just I need to look.
It's not monthly. It's per 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 service.
I'm sorry, per service, per service.
No, no, it's not monthly.
Which could be even more. And so and so I, you know, I I am all about expediting things, making sure that we can, you know, provide the service and procure in a timely manner. I just don't want I just I just don't want you guys to say, hey, we're going to use this service, we're going to use this marketer or contractor, and then that same person's on the city side. So now you got someone double dipping on both sides. I don't want to see that. I'm not going to allow that to happen, you know? And so for me, I just, you know, again, Dan, it's not that I don't trust you. It's just that for $75,000 over and over and again, that will add up. And, you know, I think it's important that we and maybe and maybe the conversation is identifying what services can be approved. If they are $75,000 related to, you know, a certain subject matter, fine, I'm okay with that, right? But if we're spending $75,000 on like a consulting firm, you know, to consult X, Y, and Z, I'm not going to go for that, you know? Especially I just I just don't want to see that happen.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that as a city or as a CRA, we're entering into something new we've never done before. So I would be okay with a $10,000 from a preliminary basis. I think operationally, we need to see how things work. If it is going to be a cumbersome process, we give it 90 days, and then we can do a reevaluation. Nothing has to be set in stone. But I think $10,000 would be a good starting point, and we can see how it works out going from from that point. If that's just an option I was thinking I wanted to bring to the board.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, I'll accept Dan's suggestion.
And I think it's important that we know it can be brought to us in a timely manner, you know, each meeting, and it and it's nothing that's lagging too far behind.
It would it would show up on every agenda.
Right.
So.
Chair. Yeah, I guess my question, kind of board member Turken, is along your lines with knowing what I would be more comfortable knowing the items. Because, Tim, for example, do you what are some things that you that you contract with on the back end that doesn't necessarily come before the commission? Because, I mean, or come before the board? You know, wearing our other hat, and I won't get into that, but, you know, there's a report for any purchases, you know, within a certain amount. We get to see a report. We see what what is happening, what's going on. So I think if we could get into the habit, Tim, of also adding an item for those purchases just so we can see them, I think that would be helpful in this new era. But do you just a couple of examples? Because I we don't since we don't see a report of what maybe you contract or staff contracts on a on a regular basis that would fall in this category of not necessarily come before us, do you have any examples just so we can just do you understand what I'm asking?
No, absolutely. So there's a difference between the services that would be provided by RMA, and there would be difference of services that they have the approval authority on outside with other consultants. We follow the city's procurement methodologies. So there's certain thresholds that can be approved singularly by the executive director. There are ones that require three proposals. And then there's also things that need to go out for solicitation that would require your input and approval with that exceed certain thresholds. That's all. One category would be design services, and the other would be construction services. And they have different thresholds that they would abide by. I just want to make sure and clear that there's a difference between what they're going to be providing as far as services to be done in-house and then what you would have as outhouse considerations that would go through those normal city procurement policies and procedures. If you're looking at them providing both, that's also an option. That's purely up to you if you're looking at some sort of reporting mechanism.
I'll give you one example of an initial service that we did for the city of Pompano. We acquired quite a bit of property on Atlantic Boulevard, and it's in the in the historic district. And so the manager, the manager contract, who was the contract administrator, hired myself together with an urban designer, and we designed we proposed a garage for the historic district because it's short of parking. So so I that's the sort it's really mainly design services because we're very I'm very design oriented, and design then eventually ends up on property owned by the CRA, and then that ends up into the private sector for a development project.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Yeah, see, that and that is my concern is that, you know, we can end up with lots of designs of all of our properties, and we're spending lots of money on designs, and then, you know, where are we? So I think that I think I agree to that until we really know how this is working and what the process is, that I'm comfortable with $10,000. And I think that keeps things rolling. But as far as like designs and what your ideas are, I would really like for them to come before us just so we can get to know you too on where what you're thinking and what you have thoughts on on different projects, because that's really what you're here for is to tell us what you think to do on Federal Highway, what you think we should do with UPS, what you think. So I would rather those design opportunities come before us so that we can explore it and make sure we're all on the right track while we're getting to know you and you're getting to know us and the city and the dynamics of our residents.
And that being said, I could go along with what the city manager is saying, that we kind of put this on a trial basis, okay? And then we come back and address it because there's still a lot of questions in my head about this. And I think we just need time and not to jump off in the deep water right now. Not that, you know, again, we not saying that I don't trust you, but this is new to all of us, okay? And I think we need to move cautiously and not just jump in with all four right now. So I go along with the with the $10,000 right now, okay? And then we take another look at it later on down the road.
And just for clarification, this is for expenditures that RMA would charge the CRA, not outside services needed for, you know, whatever demolition.
So I'm going to jump in with a couple of points here. So first, regardless of what this contract says, the CRA will have to follow the city's procurement policy. So depending on the type and the amount of the service, there may be additional costs required. Second, RMA is entitled under this contract, they while they can't assign the contract in whole, they can work with their subcontractors, but they remain ultimately responsible. So if RMA wanted to provide an additional service and the board authorized it to do so, RMA is entitled to work with the subcontractor that it works with, but it remains responsible for the execution of the project. So we wouldn't be charged additional for it, and it would not require additional CRA oversight. It would be within RMA's with RMA's purview on all of those fronts.
Now, kind of help me out here. We're not saying that RMA can. I mean, it sounds to me like double dipping, okay? If they're working for us, $400,000, I have a problem with that already, but that's beyond that. But but if he's working for us 100%, now it sounds to me like he's also had the option to work for a subcontractor in addition to receiving.
No, sir.
Our $400 and 400,000 plus whatever he agrees with this other subcontractor.
Well, so if I understand your question, it's can Mr. Brown work for the CRA and for a subcontractor and charge the CRA twice?
Correct.
I don't believe that that is is accurate. I think the other question to ask there is whether Mr. Brown would be charging for both his time as an executive director and for his time in providing an additional service. The way the contract is drafted at the moment, it says that it's anticipated broadly at the moment that the additional services will be provided by a team that does not ordinarily work for the CRA. So in other words, the same hour couldn't be charged twice by the same person. That said, each additional service would need to be negotiated in a separate contract with the CRA. So that could be worked out at the time. But if I understand your concern, it's that you don't want to pay the same person twice for the same hour.
If we are hiring for $400,000, I want 100% of Mr. Brown's time for the CRA of Boynton Beach. Not that he's spending 20% over here and giving us 80% or 50/50. That's that's my concern. And I just feel that it's a an opportunity there, a door that's open that shouldn't be open. That he should be working for Boynton Beach, period.
So I think part of the.
I don't I don't work for the subcontractor. I hire the subcontractor.
I understood. I understand that.
I don't work for them. For example, the garage.
We got you under contract. I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay? And that expires after so many years, three or whatever it is. But what I'm saying, why you, okay.
I I I'll try to provide some sort of analogy for clarification. This having RMA here is going to be no different than having a corporate attorney that served as the city attorney for the city of Boynton Beach for 30 years. This wasn't the only municipality that Jim Cheroff's firm had when he was here. They had probably four or five others, and you kind of hire them for capacity. And their wherewithal as far as like navigating their industry of expertise. And that's essentially why we're bringing RMA in. It's just like having a corporate attorney be the municipal attorney. They're essentially a corporation, and they represent Pompano Beach, West Palm Beach, Boynton Beach. So their reach is going to be vastly more extensive than having a executive director. And again, it's like I prefaced before previously, we could look at this from a 90-day trial standpoint, 180-day trial standpoint, and to kind of piggyback off what board member Kelly was saying, I think right now what we're missing is trust. And the only way we gain trust is through time. And again, it's essentially going to be the board's decision as far as taking that leap and seeing if something different is going to work, because we have been out as a CRA looking for a replacement for Twee for the better part of two years. And there's been absence of leadership, and Tim's did a marvelous job like leading us in that absence, but we haven't had a permanent structure there. So it's just something different. That's my comprehension, just opining to the board.
Yeah, and I received that, Dan. I appreciate that. But, you know, just like, you know, Jim Cheroff operation didn't work, that's why we had to go out and get our own Shauna and her team, because it didn't work.
Yeah, but it hasn't.
But I understand what you're saying. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but that's my take.
Yeah, and I mean, it hasn't worked looking for someone for, I think, it's almost three years, or it's it's pretty long.
Two years.
Two years. So two firms and going out from the. Two firms and going out from the city, and no one has applied, and then they did, they were using it as leverage, so, you know, we keep missing windows here to try to figure out, and we have a company that has a proven track record that turns municipalities around.
Okay.
So I'm gonna propose, or do you have more things you want to run there? Okay, so then I'll save my motion.
Just a quick question, though, for the $10,000, is that, could there be 100, in an example, not that it's gonna happen, but could there be unlimited X number of $10,000 individual charges that don't come to the board, because they're, you know, small in scope?
Well, if, if it's the same design project, no, you, and it, and there are three, so let's say there were three $10,000 contracts in order to deal with a design of a piece of property the CRA owned, I'd bring that to the board, because that, that, that's three times 10 is 30, that's over $10,000, so I'd bring that to the board.
Yeah, I think-
Look, if you, if you feel, if you feel, if you want to try the $10,000, that's fine. If you don't even feel comfortable with that, we'll just come to the board. I mean, it, it just, I, I was trying to do that so we could expedite.
Yeah, it goes back to efficiency of things getting caught up, so if I'm comfortable with the $10,000-
And their people that-
That will come.
And 90 days, yeah.
Yeah, and 90 days.
Right.
$10,000 for 90 days, and then we can revisit this.
There you go.
As I say, one, one other additional thought, if it-
It may be, it may be 90 to 180, because it just depends on how long it takes.
Right, okay.
You, if the board wanted, you could also put a, a cap on that, so he could have $10,000, and then if he were, if RMA were to hit like $70,000, then every expenditure after that would have to come back to the board, if you wanted to put a cap on, on the number. Not required, just a thought as, as a way to try to thread that needle. But I'll keep going. In terms of standard of, unless we have any questions, we're all looking good, okay. In terms of standard of care, RMA agrees to perform the service of, with the amount of skill and care ordinarily used by members of that profession. We already discussed the, the cross-hiring and the fee that would be paid if the CRA were to hire an RMA employee. RMA warrants that it's authorized to enter into the agreement, that it has all the licenses it needs, that it hasn't gotten here through nefarious means, and that if it breaches, that the CRA has the right to terminate without liability. The contract states that CRA will not engage someone else to perform Executive Director services. We won't hire a competing Executive Director while RMA sits in that role. Those, that does not apply to the additional services we're discussing, that, that purely applies to the Executive Director role. RMA does not have and will not incur conflicts. If RMA were to encounter a potential conflict, it would have to bring that conflict to the board for consideration, and if and only if the board determined that it were not a conflict, then RMA could enter into that agreement if it, if it wanted, but it would be required to bring it to the board first. The contract also states that RMA will put the interest-
Question, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a definition for conflict in our contract?
So I will pull up the contract language, it's, it's, it's extensive. And so I'm, I'm going to, I'll run through this briefly, it's a 10-part conflict review, so I'm not going to read it word for word, because it is about two pages, but it generally states, you know, that it's not given kickbacks, it's not going to accept kickbacks, it hasn't solicited the contract, that it won't employ or indirectly employ someone who works for the city or an elected official. It won't give any inappropriate gifts or receive any appropriate gifts. It has no interest and will not acquire an interest which would conflict with its performance under the agreement. It won't engage or hire any person that would have such an interest. They will not hold or maintain any continuing or frequently recurring employment contractual relationship or business association which could appear to influence RMA's work within the CRA. Its officers, personnel, and subcontractors will not serve as an expert witness against the CRA during the term of the contract, and then for anything related to the CRA, should the contract ever be terminated. Again, it will notify the CRA in writing by certified mail of all potential conflicts for this board's consideration. And in the event RMA is permitted to use subcontractors, which it is for most of its services, it will make sure that its subcontractors agree to abstain from having conflicts of the type that we just discussed. So to answer your question, there's not a direct definition of conflict, however, a series of circumstances that would constitute a conflict are spelled out, and in addition, there are some, because of the role that he would hold, that there are some statutory ethics concerns in there as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, legal compliance, not surprisingly, RMA agrees it will follow the law. In terms of funding, the agreement is conditioned upon annual funding by the CRA. RMA will maintain records for purposes of audit for five years after the services or any litigation. The CRA does undergo an annual audit, so this would be, you know, even in addition to that. RMA agrees it will not infringe on anyone else's property rights in performance of its contract. The insurance has been reviewed by the CRA staff as well as the city's risk management staff to ensure compliance with all appropriate policies. All work that RMA creates for the CRA, whether it be a graphic design, a plan, a document, whatever it is, will become the property of the CRA upon its creation, so there will be no need to transfer copyright or any other intellectual property rights. If they make it for the CRA, it belongs to the CRA the moment it comes into existence. In terms of indemnification, RMA will indemnify the CRA if RMA is negligent and causes a problem, and the CRA will indemnify RMA for negligent or wrongful conduct of the CRA employees. Please note that the contract is explicit in that it does not waive the CRA's sovereign immunity protections, and so the CRA is not, is not losing its protections in that regard. We've already discussed sort of the, the non-solicitation of each other's employees. In terms of default, if CRA, if RMA were to default, then the CRA would have the ability to terminate this contract for cause upon 30 days' written notice, and at that point, only fees for work due would be required to be paid. In the termination for convenience, we've had a bit of an update, again, in a conversation with Mr. Brown earlier today. RMA, if the CRA were to terminate for convenience, meaning no one has done anything wrong, it just doesn't appear to be a love match at that point in time, the CRA could just terminate. RMA would have 90 days to continue its service and wind up in its affairs, and then RMA has agreed that instead of seeking 90 days' worth of compensation after the termination becomes effective, it would lower that amount to be 30 days' worth of compensation after that termination is effective. So it would essentially be 120 days from the notice of termination, that's the amount that the CRA would, would pay, and 90 days of that would be with RMA providing service. In terms of if something were to go wrong, if any litigation would be here in Florida, it would not be before a jury, it would be before a judge, that's typical in these cases. RMA's will, will, and its employees will cooperate with the Inspector General as necessary. RMA, as we talked about earlier, does not have the ability to sell or assign this contract in whole, it does have the ability to use subcontractors. And I think we've pretty well discussed contract administration. I will just add for the board's benefit that I have spoken with City Legal about this, as well as Mr. Duggar. And so long as Mr. Duggar's role remains to be contract administration, then, then that's acceptable, and we can enter an inter-local agreement with the city for that. However, in the event of a conflict, or if there is a complaint or something that requires attention, then the city's request is that Mr. Duggar would bring that to my attention. If it's contract interpretation, that falls within my court, I'll of course keep you updated, and if it's something other than that, then it will come to the board for their attention. So he's not in the conflict resolution business, he's in the administration business. And so that's what, what we've discussed with City Legal, so I would need to bring an additional inter-local agreement back to that effect for you all to review next month, if that's what you choose to do. Please note that you're not obligated to select Mr. Duggar, you can also choose yourselves, we just, the general practice would not be to have the only person reviewing RMA's contract to be something that RMA has the employee ability to fire, so that would either be the city manager or you all, typically speaking, or, or someone that the city manager were to designate. So I believe that those are the highlights. Obviously, if we have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Mr. Brown is here, I don't know if he has anything to add, but those are sort of the, the highlights of the longer document.
Are there any questions from the board?
Will the CRA board receive anything that goes through the contract administrator on the consent agenda for us to review, or how would that work?
I don't believe that's presently the plan, however, the agenda is the board chair's to control, and should she request that, it would, it would be on-
Well, I did ask that we, in the future, add any purchases similar to what we get on the city commission side, any purchases that it comes on either informational items or under consent, just so we can see what is being purchased and what's happening. I think that's just, I think, just for transparency.
For the benefit of clarification for staff, the ordinary invoice submitted by RMA will again be that 1/12 of the annual fee. Would you like for those to be part of your agenda, or are you just saying additional expenditures?
Additional expenditures for me, and do we need to have that required in the contract? Like, do we need to add that in the contract, or do we have the ability as the board to request those transactions?
All of those documents would be public records when they're created, the board could request that they be part of your agenda as your natural authority.
Yeah, I don't have the full public records, because I'd like that just automatically on, on the agenda.
Yeah. For additional services, to be clear.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I see five nodding heads, so thank you.
I, I just, I'm gonna add, like, whatever the board decides that you guys have a certain comfort level, I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna call you Vice Mayor, but Chair Member Hay, he said as far as like, he wasn't as comfortable, like whatever you guys need from me, or you need from Chris, or Catherine, like, we're gonna be here to try to soothe whatever issues or conflicts that you guys arise, so.
Fair enough.
Yep, so, the, I mean, the only things I have were just the, the employment, which we talked about, allowing CRA or RMA employees to fill a promotion position, and then the other thing is, I'd like to reduce the six-month fee to three months for the hiring, and so I'm gonna go ahead and make my motion. I'll, Catherine chime in, if, if I need to change the language. Motion to amend and approve the contract with RMA to include that RMA should allow promotions for CRA and/or RMA employees based on employee preference, and that the contract administrator is City Manager Dan Duggar with the procurement authority for services by RMA for RMA to exceed no more than $10,000, and then reduce the, I don't know, I guess the headhunting fee from six months to three months.
Two additional questions. One, Mr. Brown will need to confirm that he would sign with that three-month change, and then did you also wish to accept his amendment to lower the fee for convenience from 90 days to 30 days?
Yes.
Being fiscally responsible, very good.
Yes.
I'll pay my credit cards on time.
If someone would like to second for discussion, perhaps you could ask Mr. Brown if he would accept that amendment.
I'll second for discussion.
And Mr. Brown, are you willing to accept these changes?
I'll accept that from Mr., Mr. Turkin.
Okay, so tell me, I don't have to repeat that.
Nope. No, ma'am, it's been motioned and seconded, you may take a vote when you're ready.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, welcome aboard. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I got one, too.
Okay.
I like the NCIS one there.
Let's play that.
Right? Do I have one in my bag?
I just want to say one thing, $300,000 for a CRA plan is crazy.
We budget high and hope for the best.
Okay, we can keep on moving.
Thank you very much, Board Members, that was, that was pretty easy, I think, for all of us. So, I just gave in.
Well, we're gonna work you to death. We're gonna work you to death.
I know you are. Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Apologies, if I could also have a motion just to authorize the board chair to sign, subject to final legal review once I make those changes, so we don't have to-
So move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Nay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, so now we are moving on to the consent agenda. I have it here that staff requested to pull 11N, but is that true, Tim?
We, we have amended that, so you will not need to pull it.
So we're glad we don't have to pull it, that's all you needed, okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, and now let's move on to the CRA Advisory Board. I'm going to turn to our acting Executive Director, Mr. Tac, if you could give us an update.
All right, if I haven't said so, good evening, Board. The crab board has been working hard and diligently. The first report will be presented by Alicia Roundtree. It's going to be in regards to beautification efforts within the CRA district above and beyond. Yeah.
Good evening, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, Alicia Roundtree, AZR 520, Second Court, Boynton Beach, Florida, and I'm very excited to be here tonight to present on something that we've been working on in the CRA. Oh, the clicker. Oh, okay, I didn't see it, okay. The CRA Advisory Board. So, the CRA Advisory Board, so these are some items for beautification of the CRA area, and this was all a collaborative effort from this Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, our Board Chair, Ally LaPresto, Tom Remisio, and then you can see the others that are listed there. So overview of what we're gonna be talking to, talking about tonight, is the goal of this is to elevate the beauty and the functionality of our CRA district by exploring enhancements that go beyond the basic city requirements. So in this presentation, it's not gonna be long, because, oh, we're just gonna be highlighting some strategies to improve the aesthetics, walkability, and community pride, review some recommendations from the past development, redevelopment plans, then also present some new suggestions to the board for creating a more vibrant, welcoming district. Okay, making sure. All right, so we're gonna go over the seven, beautification ideas, key beautification ideas, facade revitalization program for residential, unified street signage and pole light banners, including gateway features, pavers on Ocean Avenue to make the Marina more walkable, wide sidewalks, new water taxi with stops, business window signage regulation, and lighting options for Interstate 95. All right, so we have had a very robust discussion about the facade revitalization program, but implementing a program for residential, for the residential residents in the CRA district, when we did our research, we looked at other CRA areas, and we saw that they had great programs for the, for the residents in their area, and we thought that Boynton needed that as well. We have some programs as a resident of Boynton, basically my lifetime, besides going to college. When we talk about revitalization and, you know, we ask about it, a lot of times we're sent to other agencies, and the paperwork is daunting, that people do not, just, they don't go through with it, but we have residents who have lived in Boynton their whole lives, who are living in their homes, that they have, the only, the only residents of that home, like my mom, she's at home when she was, it was built, she has been the only resident at home, and they, they want assistance and need assistance to help beautify their home. So we came up with this facade revitalization program for residential, and again, of course, it creates a more welcoming and attractive neighborhood, it helps stabilize this and increases property value, and it also encourages property investment with, with the homeowners. So if we are assisting them, then they may go the next mile, extra mile with also improving their homes as well. And then, again, it'll be a district-wide initiative and adjacent to the city's streets escapes and beautification efforts. This is only a plus for the city, and definitely the CRA area. Next, we have, I don't know if we want to stop and ask questions, I would just keep going, too.
Keep going, keep going.
I don't understand. Unified street signage and light pole banners, again, trying to make our area beautified so that it can be cohesive throughout the whole entire city, especially our CRA area when people are coming from off of I-95 and they're coming into this area, we want it to be welcoming and beautiful. So of course, this will create a consistent visual identity throughout the CRA area. And it improves wayfinding for visitors, so when we're going around and we're trying to find things, you know, we have the new businesses that are going on in the heart of Boynton, et cetera, that people can easily find those businesses in the area. Establishes gateway features, we're gonna talk about that more a little bit later. We're gonna talk about that more a little bit later. And then just, again, just enhancing the aesthetic appeal of this area. And then also supports community branding. So these are some, I know this is big, but when we were talking about, you know, aesthetics, these are some of the pictures that we came up with. Just something that when you are exiting off of I-95, you're just welcome. It's beautiful, like, oh my gosh, I'm in the city of Boynton Beach. So just some type of aesthetic as we are coming in. We were just pulling pictures, just trying to find this different ways or different ideas, et cetera. So we know we can improve over I-95, but just again, just robust. As soon as you get off of 95, we want it to be like, oh, you're in the city of Boynton Beach. So these are just some examples of that that we came up with, okay? And this is an example of the street poles line. All right, pavers on Ocean Avenue to the Marina to make it more walkable. Of course, it makes it more safe for pedestrians. And again, enhancing the look of the area. And of course, it encourages more foot traffic for businesses. So we, I know for years and years and years, we talked about the foot traffic down here, how are we gonna attract businesses to our area? Well, we can attract it by making it more walkable in the downtown area. All right. New water taxi service with stops. We thought that this would expand our transportation options for the area. If we have a new water taxi service that will take us with stops in Boynton. I know that we do have a water taxi that goes up to Jupiter, but if we have another one that can go, have different stops in our area. And again, it promotes the district as a destination. So when we're enhancing or we're adding those stops, it's saying, okay, in this route, I can stop here in Boynton, I can stop here in Boynton. And again, it makes it a destination. And when people are visiting this area, it also makes it a destination and something else for them to do when they're here. Next, we have business window signage regulation. Again, just trying to make sure everything is clean and consistent in our area. It improves the visibility and readability for shoppers and then strengthens the overall district branding and professionalism. And lastly, say we weren't gonna keep you long, the lighting options at Interstate 95. So I know, I don't know what we're doing with the area of the hotel, but just increasing and just making the lighting look a little better in that area. Again, we want to wow people when they're getting off of I-95 and coming into our CRA area. Again, it just increases the overall branding and professionalism of our area. And again, we're trying to attract people to this area. So again, the aesthetic cleanliness and professionalism, that's what we're going for. And that's the end of my presentation. So thank you so much for having me tonight.
Outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So good. So many great suggestions. I just, I think that as somebody who has sat on the Crab Board and has had very minimal tasks given when I sat on it, I love that you guys have really embraced it and thought, you know what? Let's, what can we do? And this is exactly what you can do, is really, you know, be, give us more ideas and more perspective on what our residents want to see. And so I just, I really appreciate this presentation. And there's some really great ideas. And I know we're really looking forward to, you know, the entry feature on Boynton Beach Boulevard and super excited about what that's gonna look like one day because we have all driven down Boynton Beach Boulevard and wish that we had lighting and sign and that we really welcomed everyone to our community. So this is, I love this presentation. So thank you guys so much. Thank you, Angela, for being here, and thank you, Alicia.
Yeah, I too would like to compliment you guys. Outstanding job. I, for a long time, have been wanting to just wow the people when they enter Boynton Beach. That's why I push so hard for the tier poles to get, to add character to the city of Boynton Beach. And your signage, your suggestions are very much needed for our city. We have a lot to offer here in Boynton Beach. And I don't think, in the past, we have marketed ourselves properly. So I'm happy to see you guys put forth some time and effort into this and bring us these suggestions. Job well done. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so Angela's going to be presenting on the splash pad as a part of the assignment to the Crab Board as well.
Okay, go Angela.
Thank, hi, everybody. Angela Tryonowski. I'm a CRA Advisory Board member. I'm also the mom of two, so I felt quite passionate about this. Just to give some history for those who may not have been here for this, but in January, this Crab Board, I was not on it at the time, but did a presentation. And the Board at the time said, hey, we like that idea of a water feature. Come back with some ideas. So the Crab Board did discuss it, and here's the ideas that we came up with. So the same group that Alicia talked with, this was also a collaborative effort.
Get a drum roll.
All right. So we, the CRA, right? The mission is to create a vibrant downtown and revitalize our neighborhoods. When you think CRA District, we have to go above and beyond what the city is. It's not just removing blight and removing bite, but it's making it a little bit extra. That's why we have CRA dollars. It's to make it even better than the regular city. So our recommendations are to look at a splash park within Pence Park, which currently is budgeted. Thank you, by the way. That is much needed. I'm very excited. Also, a distinct and artistic water feature within the cultural district. So we'll start with the Pence Park Splash Park. And that is the downtown district. So we're gonna start there. So zero-depth splash parks, if you're not familiar. They can be small or they can be epic. So I'm gonna cue my IT to play a video. Hopefully. Okay, here it comes. Now, really, the drum roll. Okay. There we go. So this is a small.
Water table and these misters are perfect for little ones.
Big kids love spraying each other in this giant.
Small, right? And we have another one. We'll show you an idea. That's a small splash park. So my assistants back there in ID have another video to play. So they can be small or they can be epic. So here's an epic splash park.
This is Creekside Park. And this is in the southwest quadrant of our town. And it was a much-needed park in this area of town. And when we started designing Creekside Park, we knew we wanted to put a water feature into this park. And our citizens kept saying, we wanna see something bigger. We're being told, we want an epic splash park. We want a destination splash park, not just the run-of-the-mill splash park. So we went to ACS and said, what do you got? And they said, guess what? We've got this in design right now. We think it's gonna be perfect. All the eyes always have turned to the design. And the design did not disappoint. It came into reality and it's been just such a smash success.
So again, small or epic, right? And if you ask the citizens of Boynton Beach or you look at what's going on in Boynton Beach, oh, I'm trying to go next here. I think they gotta click me back on. All right, there we go. So with splash parks, they tend to be vibrant gathering areas that bring a lot of different age groups to the park. And when you looked at, look at the 2022 Parks and Rec Report, the Grand Master Plan, yes, all 250 pages of it. You'll see that splash parks are something that the citizens of Boynton were asking for. It was rated above pickleball. Yes, that's right. It's rated above pickleball. And it brings an activation to an area that is different than other park features. And when the more people you have within a park, the more you're gonna reduce crime. And safety is of the utmost importance in parks. And that's what our citizens want to see. So Pence Park, we want it to be a success. And if you look at what we have right now, barrier-free park, we do have a small splash park there. It is a very popular park. But if you look at other cities, you have Boca, Delray, and Lake Worth, they do have splash parks that people come from outside of the city and they travel to. Personally, as a mom of two, I will drive up to 30 minutes for a splash park in the summer. And when you go to an area, then you go to the park, then you go get a coffee on the way. I don't think you've seen a mom at a park without a coffee in her hands. And then afterwards, you go get a lunch, you go get an ice cream. So it does bring business from outside of the area into the city. And that's what we want to see within the CRA District. So some recommendations for this park, and it's going to be consistent with what you hear from, within the Parks and Rec surveys, shade is very important. Interactive water features that are lower at heights for children. That is my child model on the top left. That is my son, the little guy in the yellow. Color and art features. Benches for parents, a grass area for picnic, so a place for folks to sit down. Maybe artificial turf, to consider that, a place for people to sit down and cool off. Fenced in, an area that's fenced in bathrooms as well. For weekends or busy times, I actually sat here where I heard a food truck vendor come and say, hey, I want a permit, I want more places to bring my food truck. Consider having an area where people can, for food truck vendors to come on busy times during the weekend. And bathrooms are important as well, as well as security. So I know that there's a lot of talk about security. I believe we do have the real-time crime center. So cameras that could perhaps connect to the real-time crime center as well. So what are the citizens saying? I did my own public outreach. And you could read for yourself the comments. People are excited. There's not many detractors when it comes to a splash park. So additional considerations is obviously cost. Pence Park is funded. And so there's, you can go small or you can go large. So there is a budget, a budget there for a worst-case scenario. And so we have to ensure, you know, community input is important. Implementation costs, the healthy, making sure it's a healthy water system, consideration of the maintenance per year. And then safety is critical for all parks. But specifically, where if you want to have activation across multiple ages and you want young people to bring their children, safety is going to be critical. So that's a splash park. Moving on to water features, because I don't want to keep us here all night. The other item is a water feature within the cultural district. And this is another thing we were all very, very excited about. So Boynton, it lacks a distinct artistic feature. And we're all talking about that and we want it. I'm personally, I'm not an artist. My background is in engineering, but I am an art. I appreciate good art. So I would love to see it. Water makes sense for our identity as a Boynton Beach. We have a sailfish as our logo. We have a thriving Marina District. It is something that will be memorable for the folks coming in. I can think off the top of my head, when I think water features, I can think of the cities I went to that had beautiful water features. There's something about it that's just memorable. And people will stay longer. It'll increase our hours of activation downtown. Now, if you take our previous presentation, you can imagine, you take a water taxi, you get off at the Marina, you walk down our strollable Ocean Ave, which has beautiful pavers and safe streets, and you walk over to the beautiful water feature in our cultural district and you're grabbing a, maybe you could do a yoga class of one of these new buildings that are coming up, but you stay longer. That you sit, you observe, and at nighttime, if you see some ideas, it's going, you can increase both daytime and nighttime hours if you add lights to it. I'm not gonna ask to play the video here, but if you guys wanna watch it later, you totally can. But just for the sake of time. But these are some examples where you can make it an art install that has water, some LEDs with lights, fountains that you can play in. These are ideas. Again, I'm not the artist, I'm the engineer. So I implore us to perhaps find the artists within our city or outside of our city, however we can, to come up with ideas here. So that would have, so here's one more, the final finale there. So our recommendation is to partner with artists to double as an art installation. So the budget can come from both CRA and the art budget. Consider fountains with LED lights so that you can have both a daytime and a nighttime water feature. And you won't need new bathrooms, it's not a splash park, it's not the same thing, right? This is something for both, that you can, you know, visit as well as maybe, maybe play in. Adults too, right? Why not? Why not? So here's our recommendations. And, you know, any questions? Please let me know.
I don't necessarily have a question. I just know from some of the research I've done, and I love this. I think it would be beautiful, you know, we live right across the street. It'd be wonderful. I just do think that security has to be tight because my concerns are that we will have people using it to go to the bathroom and to shower. And these are things that we know happen in downtown West Palm. And you can go downtown off of Flagler and see it all the time. So that is a big concern to me. So other than that, I love it. It's beautiful. I appreciate all the work that you did. I'm loving the Pence Park idea because I'm getting blown up about Pence Park all the time now. So we have to do something. But it does, the one downtown does concern me about, and also some of our ordinances are not very tight when it comes to homeless people. And I have so much compassion for people that are in that situation. I just don't want this to become a hotspot where that's where, that's all we're seeing. That's the only concern I have. Anybody else?
No, that is the number one thing I think of is, you know, it could be great for a few months and then, you know, what happens and obviously the cost. Presentation, awesome. Angela, thank you so much. This was grade-A stuff. I know that we're currently, we're in the design phase. Have we started that for Pence Park? I know we did an I-L-A.
The city's working on the design for Pence Park currently.
Okay, all right. So I'll bring that up at the next city meeting when we're wearing that Commissioner hat.
And hopefully those homes across the street get demoed from Pence Park on the north side that have been a huge problem, even in the last seven months.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely fits within the scope of the CRA. And we brought this up at the workshop last Saturday. Is maybe we look at bonds to where we ambitiously and aggressively acquire properties for this reason, right? We have those dilapidated properties, no one's moving, absentee landlords. You know, if there's anything that I know for sure that makes people get up and talk and walk, it is money. And so I think if you, you know, entice landowners, you know, for purchasing their properties, you know, I think we can create something great overall. So I think, you know, I think for this, I'm on board with looking at, you know, maybe adding this into conceptual. Obviously, talk to city staff, see what those recurring costs are gonna be. $15,000 to $25,000 annually, I don't know, would be, I don't know what scope of work would be within Parks and Rec. Well, we need a contract out, so I would need to really look at what Wellington does and some of these other places. I think Delray and Boca. And what that recurring cost is for them. But if it's, is, where did you develop that number?
We have different proposals and some we looked at other cities, so we can get that over to you.
Yeah, I just, just out of curiosity. Because if that is the reality, it's only $15,000 to $25,000 annually to maintain that? Which, I don't know if that is accurate or not. If that is, that's great.
I think it depends a lot on how epic you get.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think $15,000 to $25,000 is probably not epic, maybe the smaller one. But, yeah, you know, we'll discuss this. Because the city's spearheading this, isn't it? Okay, so we'll discuss the city commission meeting.
And one comment on crime. The, what we learned from the other CRAs at the FRA, one at the FRA conference, is that the real-time crime center, the more cameras and the more things that were added, that it has reduced a lot of problems with crime. So I don't know how new that system is for us. But with, at least with West Palm, the, they were talking about the real crimes, reducing a lot of small crime just by having the cameras. So just something to think about.
And lights.
And lights.
Patrol.
And just pure activation of people out there utilizing it and being out there and being a part of it.
Casey Dock, perfect example. Before, lots of undesirable activity. Drive by there, you know, it's people and their families and their dogs.
Thank you.
Again, I think that's, what you've done is outstanding again.
Thanks.
I would go so far as to what already been said is, take a look at some of the existing parks and either consider replacing or enhancing or modifying them. Because, you know, in Boynton, land is of a premium. But some of the parks probably, you could increase their attendance by adding, you know, water feature, whether or not it'd be small or epic. And I definitely also like the water feature, okay? It's enough to, it gets kinda hot down here and I think it's an opportunity. It's a drawcard for the families to come out. So consider looking at some of the parks that we have that may be underutilized and enhance it with these new features. and enhance it with these new features. And I guarantee you it would increase. So good job. Hit it in the right direction.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, I don't want to make the meeting longer, but thank you so much. You did a great job. And I think that the splash press is beautiful and also the water feature in the cultural district would be really exciting. And utilizing the sailfish is just, I thought it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. And it was a it was a collaborative effort. I'm here representing the crab board. So I will give them, I will give them the feedback and we really appreciate your time and attention on this.
I just wanted everyone thing. They volunteer their time. They show up. They do the work. They're committed. They're excited. They want to make Boynton better. And Leish and Angela did not get last straw to be here. They volunteered to be here to present these before you. They're they're, I mean, we have a great crab board and and you guys, thank you for doing what you do.
Mr. Roundtree and Angela, keep that spirit.
Now we will continue to old business. The first item for discussion and consideration is the heart of Boynton Shops project.
We have an update that's going to be presented by Bonnie Nicklin.
Okay. Good evening, Board. Bonnie Nicklin, grants and project manager. We're bringing this before the board per the board's request at the September eighteenth meeting. So a quick recap, it's been a pleasure to work on this project from day one. Moving west to east on the tennis, we have leases in place for a bakery, then a urgent care, then a dentist, a restaurant, the open plaza, another restaurant, a law office, a professional service office and the NOP. In response to public comment back in, I think it was 2022, the board did allocate funding to help offset the initial build out cost. It was a round number, got divided seven ways. So it's about fifty one thousand dollars and change for each tenant to use towards their build out. And they all received their unit with a concrete shell floor. That's it. So no plumbing, mechanical, electrical, no AC, no nothing. It was a concrete floor. So that's where they started and through this process, they have applied for the grants as well. But as they've all spoken to, some of the costs have gone up or some of the project items have kind of evolved with especially with the restaurants for the hood and the mechanical. Vicky sees rolling through the pictures and while I'll do that, I'll provide just a quick summary on some of the dates, speaking to the delays. So of the units, there's eight. We had four that were, one, two, three, four, five, six, six that were permit ready. And they sat in permit ready. You can see the days here, ranging from eight days all the way up to three hundred and forty two days. That means they had a permit set of plans that were ready to start and there was just delay from the developer. And so we worked and worked with them and finally got the ball rolling February of this year. So you can see that February twenty first is when commencement commencement of structure, construction, sorry, started for unit one oh three through one oh eight. So we're two hundred and sixty two days into construction. And Vicky just scrolled through the photos of the current status. They're all in various stages. Unit, if Vicky, if you can just start really quick at the top. So unit three, they have their internal framing up, their underground plumbing, the electrical rough in. Unit one oh four, quick segue, they were able to select a different developer. Y'all agreed to that back in February to accommodate each tenant's preference. So unit four elected a different developer or contractor rather to finish their unit. And so it has, it's in the status right now. Unit one oh five, that is Big John's to go. We've got the hood and the vent in. We've got the mechanical on the roof, electrical rough, plumbing rough, gas rough. So making progress slowly but surely. Unit one oh six is one of the furthest along. She has drywall and tile is on its way with the ceiling, drop down ceiling being installed as well. That's the law office. And then one oh seven, she also elected to use her own personal GCs, but she has her rough, electrical HVAC. You can't see it in this picture because it just happened. And then unit one oh eight, we have much progress on this unit, which I'm happy to see. This past week, we have all the flooring in and all of the drop ceiling in. So now it'll just be finishing touches going in for that unit. So that's the current status. We have weekly site visits. I do all my follow ups with the contractor. It is slow. When I see the progress of some of the other projects surrounding us, it pains my heart a little bit to see that. But I'm here to answer any questions you have. And if you want to go through any of the numbers in more detail, I'm prepared to share any of that information as well.
Thank you, Chair. You know my thoughts on this. This is very frustrating. To me, I voiced my position previously that delays like this are, they're business ending. And I I'm really struggling with being okay with where they are because, you know, when this project got underway, everyone was very excited and the developer was very excited to support new businesses coming in. And they have done the least bit of being supportive. And I I really struggle with this. I think that to me, it is not acceptable for them to be where they are. It's it's not. And I think that that we as a board, and this is my position, that we have to do whatever we can to make sure that they are able to open their doors. And so I would ask staff to figure out what that means. You know, where the discrepancy is or where the shortfall is. Obviously, everyone's going to be in a different situation. Everyone's going to be in a little bit of a different financial situation. But I I don't want to see us, we have lost businesses in this project. And it is, this is beyond frustrating for me. And so so that is my desire is to do whatever we can to support these businesses. And Bonnie, this, I do do everything you can to support them and this is not on CRA staff at all. And I will reiterate that this is a hundred percent not on CRA staff or this board. This is completely on the end of the developer. We have done everything we can to support them and this is unacceptable. So whatever we need to do to step in, I'm a little disappointed that the developer's not here tonight with this update. So that makes it even worse because I feel like they they've kind of, their project was done. The project that was making them money and now they have moved on to other projects that are making them money. And so I think this this is has a bad, has left a bad taste in my mouth for future business for this developer. And I hope that they're listening because I am, I am very disappointed in where we are with these businesses because we, I I will leave it at that, that I support us doing whatever we possibly can to help these businesses get open.
Thank you, Chair. Catherine, do do we, or actually, let me start with Tim first. Tim, do we know the occupancy rate for the residential portion for their, they they have the CEO for both, right?
They have been fully occupied since they opened.
Fully occupied, okay.
Yeah, they received their residential.
So this isn't a matter of funding or anything, right? This is just.
No, this is a matter of priorities.
Yeah, okay. So be, what, do we know what incentives? Because this was before I was elected, this project, what incentives that we gave the, who was it? Centennial, but I know there was a different, centennial is different now than what it was back then as far as the principals. Which I think regardless doesn't matter. My my point being, do we know what incentives that the CRA had provided, like with TIF? I think TIF was one of them.
It is.
Okay, anything outside of TIF? Did we deed any land?
We had, we had the commercial, oh, yes. That, I mean, this this project has been heavily subsidized. I couldn't even off the top of my head remote call all the different funding sources.
I can. Sorry, but I can. I live and breathe this project. So yes, if you go all in with land and all the agreements, it's approximately eight million dollars. So it's about three million dollars in land acquisition. It's one point six in a TERFA. It was four hundred and thirty in the P and D. It was two point three in the commercial component. And it was a hundred to buy that, a hundred thousand, sorry, to buy that one outlier. You remember that parcel, that one? So all in approximately.
Thank you, Bonnie. So I I think we need to litigate if there is an opportunity. I don't know if we can review that contract because they're not moving. And like I said earlier, the only thing that's going to get people moving a lot of times is money. And so if they're going to have to go for attorney fees, I think they might move this project up on their priority list because it's it's been this long. I mean, they're not, this is not their priority. They'll get to it when they get to it. I think that we need to take aggressive action, let it get, this is getting out of control if there is an opportunity to do so. Thanks.
And.
Board member, hey.
I would agree with the with the my constituents here that we need to do something because it's not their priority anymore. They got the units and so they got the money. And so this, these tenants are on the low end of the total poll. But they've made loans and they're paying on those loans. So this is out of pocket money that they're essentially losing, okay, with no business to 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 compensate for that. So whatever we can do from a legal standpoint, I've tried to make some phone calls. I haven't made one lately. But I I am planning on doing that again to talk directly to the developer. That, I don't know how that works legally, but I do know him, okay? And I want to try to put some pressure on him again. But if it comes down to it, I'm willing to support going that that route. That board member Turkin just stated that we have to do something to help these tenants who've been waiting and waiting and waiting. And nothing has happened because we are not a priority. So it's by time that we move.
And you said Centennial has changed now. So what did they change?
No, no, as far as them.
Okay, so who is the partner?
Yeah, it's only, it's only family.
So can we find a clause in the contract that talks about the commercial area where they've potentially breached their side of the contract or?
So I'll decline to offer litigation strategy here at the dais, but my office will take your direction under advisement and will respond. And at the next, by the next meeting, I'll have discussed with each of you possibilities and potentially put an item on here to call for a shade session.
Okay.
In the meantime, on a staff level, if if one of you would volunteer to meet with staff and we can meet with the principal and owner on a weekly basis until such time as this, the ship has been, you know, steered correct to show that there is, from the dais, not only staff urgency, tenant urgency, but as well as the board is supporting that they need to make a commitment to finalize this project and get our tenants in there.
I will. I'm willing to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Good chair.
Yeah, of course. Any other questions or comments on this issue?
No, but then, I mean, that's, you know, on, and then if staff could get back to us as far as, you know, anything even financially that we can, how we can assist. Because I know it's kind of a, it's a mixed bag depending on on who we're talking about.
We have to look at this from a different equitable stand.
I do want to ask a question and it's, can we look at the grants that we've been providing to the local businesses and find a reasonable similar percentage to really help different kinds of businesses in the same way? For example, I know we we've talked about how creating an office space is less expensive than, for example, creating a restaurant or a medical facility. And sometimes when we look at the amounts that we're providing as a grant, if we look at the percentages, can we see that what they are?
Yes, so the chart on the screen, Vicky said, has is, you know, approximate cost of where we are right now. Again, this is just for the shell of the building or for their build out, rather, sorry, not the equipment. So strictly mechanical, electrical, plumbing, flooring, drywall, insulation. This is where we're at. If, I know it's a lot of numbers to digest, but if you go down to see two lines under the highlight, Vicky, see if you can scroll down. Keep going, you'll see a big yellow bar. Yeah, so two lines below, you can see the current percentage of the cost we're covering. This is broken down by discipline. So you can see their plumbing costs, the electrical. I do want to note that for unit one oh five, we don't have the final numbers for all the mechanical. So that's why you might see the difference in cost between the two restaurants. We definitely expect it to be somewhere similar for that mechanical work. I gave out some scenarios below if you wanted to pursue the proportionate route because like it's been mentioned, a doctor's office restaurant will have higher build out expenses versus the professional office uses. So doing a flat number doesn't make sense because we also want this to be, they're small business owners and they need to put in, you know, their equity as well. So we definitely believe in that. But if there was board consensus to provide additional funding, I have provided some scenarios of what those numbers might look like. And I've worked with finance. Our audit report will be presented to you where there'll be some more funding to reallocate. So that would be a bucket of money that you could use part of to, you know, help with some of these project costs. But again, we defer to the board and I can run through any of these scenarios if you have any specific questions.
If we can get consensus, I would like to explore what that would look like. And obviously, looking at our budget and seeing if there's there is space in there for that. But if we could do it, we understand the delay has been really, it's just been really terrible for the for the businesses. And if we could find an opportunity to potentially support a little further, I I can't say right now that we can or we can't, but it's something that we can do research on and see. No promises, just promise to do research and and see what we can come up with.
We we can run some different scenarios, looking at, let's say, established. So you can see that there's different percentages of what we're funding. We can get better idea in the numbers so that it's more complete. And then you could, you could look at, well, what scenario would it look like if you did thirty five percent all across the board as a bare minimum or forty percent? And then we can look at what that total value is and seeing if there's room within our budget per what Bonnie was discussing to see if there's an opportunity to provide additional funding for the units on a more equitable basis. Because certainly you know, an office space is nowhere near the amount of expenditure as a restaurant use would be.
You can see in the the gray bars to the side, that would be the approximate funding if you wanted to go anywhere from fifty percent all the way up to sixty five percent. So I gave each row, I would start at, yeah, fifty, fifty five, sixty, sixty five. But you can see currently where they're at in the line just above as far as the proportionate share of costs that we're covering.
And just because, again, this was before I was ever here, this is because the developer has not finished and and continued, like this, this is why we're in this.
Some of these leases were, I'll have to speak to, you know, some of these leases were signed in twenty twenty two. And as John mentioned, you know, he secured funding for this build out anticipating its start in twenty twenty three. You saw they were delayed in permitting, just again, ready to start the construction, but it didn't start all the way up to three hundred and forty two days with nothing happening. So once we finally lit the fire, we've been in construction two hundred and sixty two days and mind you.
That's too long.
Mind you, the villages.
We have houses, we have houses that are almost finished.
I asked if we can move quickly.
Less than that. This is insane.
I'm getting a meeting with this developer as quick as possible.
Yeah.
And then having this on next month's agenda to try to give you some relief.
I I would, I would actually like to have almost weekly meetings with the developer.
I'm with you. Yeah, I agree.
I would, yeah, I would agree with that.
I I'm, I'll, whatever it is, standing every week, let's just do it and.
This this developer has been meeting with staff for the last few years and nothing's really changed. I mean.
Well, let's get, let's get.
They need to get pressure from the board.
Yeah, and also counsel to see if we can.
I think pressure should be legally.
Well, but Catherine, we can't talk about that now. So Catherine's going to come back to us.
The ball's down, the time is money.
Yeah, I'd like to see this on the agenda.
Costs is going up and up and up and it.
And they should own some of this too.
It's only going to get worse.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't be the only ones helping and carrying the load. And so, yeah, so support that.
All right, we're going to hustle on that and then hopefully this can be on next month's agenda to start.
Yes.
Getting some traction for you guys.
Whatever we can do.
And from my end, do you just want to see this spreadsheet tweaked a little more with more numbers just so I make sure I have clear direction? How do you want the numbers presented?
We can provide alternate scenarios for you and then we can take a look at it, what the overall impact would be. And we'll bring that back in December.
Okay.
I also would like to know what the cost is because of the delay. Because when we sit down and talk with this.
Right, this is just the builder.
But I would love to be able to have this number to say because of you doing this, it has cost this. And I think that would help me go to battle.
We'll see what we guys can do because there's a lot of. We'll see what the board can do, because there's a lot of.
Be hard to talk about revenue, like you don't know what your, you know, what the true loss is going to be. But, I mean, even in the last three years, when you have a lease and you're, you're anticipating.
That would be a good number to have.
Mm-hmm.
Hi. All right, anything else on this issue?
Do you have enough direction?
We, we have enough direction, I believe.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we are moving on to item 14B. It's the presentation regarding the Sierraian property located at 210 East Ocean, which was tabled on September 9th to, to, meeting to a date certain.
Motion to remove from table?
Okay, we have a motion. Okay. We have, we have a motion, and we do have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. So my, my thoughts are, I, I would like to table this again, strictly because we are making some serious changes. And to talk about it now, we're, I feel like we've brought this up so many times since I've been here, and it's the wrong time.
Yeah.
Table second.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Apologies, board chair, respectfully, I do need you to table to a date certain.
Can we do January?
So can we put it on the January meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Motion to table for January meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table for January meeting, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for that.
Come on down, Bonnie.
Okay, moving on. Next item for discussion and consideration is the continued discussion for future co-working space located at 419 North Seacrest Boulevard. Bonnie, you're back with us.
Yeah, I'm back. Good evening, board. So this is a follow-up to your direction. When we presented this property, we presented a few concepts. The board had consensus to move forward with a co-work. So before we go into spending money and hiring consultants, we wanted to put out a public input survey. So we did, we issued it on September 9th and ran it for a month to October 24th. We used our newsletters, our social media. We partnered with the city's economic development department to get it through their social outlets, and as, well, as well as presented at the Business Over Brews activity, or activation they do. We had flyers in City Hall, we had flyers in the City Hall library. I personally talked to all the regulars at the tables, just to get the overall interest in having a co-work space. So I'm going to run through these real quick. Overall, the consensus was yes, they have interest in a co-work space. We had 96 responses. The first question was, would you be interested in a co-working space in your community? And yes. And the next one was, how often would you use a co-working space? And the biggest was weekly, and then the other options are there. The next one was, what time of day would you most likely use a co-working space? Most mornings and afternoons, so not much demand for a weekend. What type of work? So of the surveys, most of them already work remote, and they just want a space to come and work in. These were the desired features, high-speed internet, private meeting rooms, quiet work areas, collaborative spaces, printing, scanning, kitchenette for, you know, coffee, that kind of thing, lockers, and a space for networking events that they could use it for. We found out where they currently work. Most of them work from home. And then we asked about the facility fees, how much they would be interested in paying. Of course, free. But then we had some, you know, around the 25 to 50. We were doing hourly rates, oh, sorry, monthly rates. Sorry, this is all monthly rates. I should have notated that, my bad. And then we also had a fee structure, how they would want to pay, mix of both, per hour and monthly. What kind of events and programming would they like to use? Again, networking workshops, guest speakers, business development, none, they're just here to work. Of the A-range polls, you can see the responses here. Good range. And then just the overall comments, great addition, again, pretty good support overall. So right now, staff is just seeking board direction and consensus to like officially move forward with this avenue. You know, just quickly, Delray CRA has a co-work space. We don't have to do the exact model, but I did look into their program a little bit. We would bring that all back to you, of course, to find out our specific programming. But the Delray co-working space, they do charge fees. They have hourly rates, they have weekly rates. They have a 25% discount for Delray residents. So that would be a model where we could start off of and evolve. But yes, we're looking to get your direction on moving forward with a design consultant. Renovating the space. Here for questions.
Anyone?
I think this is awesome, Bonnie. Thank you so much, and thank you to staff for putting this forward. This is super unique and a good use of what our mission is. One, one idea, when looking at this survey, that networking was the number one anticipated use or wanted use. I, I think outside of that co-working space, this could be an opportunity where we utilize this for networking business events hosted by economic development or the CRA.
Absolutely.
You know, or maybe, you know, some, some form of educational space where we talk about our business grants, you know, an educational component for residents, too. So I think not just a space for co-working, co-working and networking, but a, a space that we can use that's a little bit outside of City Hall and where we could have functions to help what we're trying to accomplish here, and then also our partners in economic development. So I, that, that, just a thought, especially, you know, if it's a little bit slow at first and we're not seeing, you know, a huge ROI right away. I think, you know, I think that might be a good additional use for this project. So, great job, I think this is super exciting.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Bonnie, I agree. I think this is great, and I think, obviously, our phones listen to us because now all of a sudden, on my algorithm, I'm getting all these co-working spaces. Where they have like, every week, they have a theme. It's like a music theme, or, and so the music they're playing in the co-working space is a theme, and they all hang out, like they, it really becomes their own, like, office, and they hang out, and they have lunch together, and they, you know, so. So it has become part of my social media algorithm. So I've been enjoying watching those co-working spaces and thinking, this is, this is kind of cool. It's, you know, and I, I was really interested with the age of uses. And, you know, to think that, you know, the 55 and olders that are, you know, still working but are able to work from home, but are, would be, you know, as a way to socialize and to get out, they know the importance of being social. And so I'm excited about seeing what we can come up with. I think it's a really cool concept for downtown, I think, and I really look forward to seeing it take off. So, thank you for all your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay. All right, the next item for discussion and consideration is the consideration of revised Exhibit A to the inter-local agreement between the Boynton Beach CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for funding construction and personal services. Mr. Tac, is this one on you?
It is. So as we had approved a master and a local agreement with the city for city implemented projects that are funded by the CRA, we had that approved back in September. Because of the inn coming in at $575,000 and a 10% contingency, we are revising or asking the board to revise the Exhibit A of the Master ILA to up to a total cost of $623,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. And motion passes unanimously. Moving on. We are now moving on to new business. The next item for discussion and consideration is the discussion and consideration of 2026 CRA board meeting dates. Mr. Tac.
All right, the item before the board is the future dates for the CRA board meetings. Vicki took great lengths of looking at potential conflicts, and we're looking at January 13th as being in conflict with Palm Beach County Days in Tallahassee. As such, we have proposed alternative dates, that being Wednesday, January 7th, Thursday, January 8th, which is before, or perhaps afterwards, January 12th. Also, keep in mind that the January meeting, we were proposing doing a joint, or joint meeting with the city, which would be held before that meeting.
So to that point, because we're not having a second commission meeting in December, our January, the first meeting in January is going to be a long one. So then I would hate to have a long Tuesday night meeting and then have another meeting Wednesday night. Tallahassee, my, I'm not traveling until the 13th. I don't know if others would go up on Monday, but I would be amenable to doing on Monday, the 12th.
I'm going up on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to propose.
Thursday, the 8th?
I was going to propose the 8th.
That's fine.
I don't know if anyone's okay with that.
Gives us a, a day.
Or you do the 9th, you guys want to come in on a Friday?
No.
That was not on the option.
Joke.
But you guys can do that if you want.
Can I answer it really quick? No.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the 8th.
Yeah, I'm okay with the 8th. Okay.
Okay, we'll take that as consensus.
You do need a vote on the, on the board dates.
Oh, sorry.
And then we have to discuss March as well.
I was just going to keep going.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry, I thought you meant on the full schedule.
All right, so we also have a conflict on March 10th, which is the municipal election day. Usually, we typically move it the day before.
The 9th?
I mean, I'm not even running, but I know I wouldn't want that. When you have to run, you have, you're up at 4 o'clock in the morning for, for election day. And that's rough. But I don't, I'm not running, so I'm going to defer to.
Two of you.
We could also move it.
Just one of us. We're Woodrow.
She's the only one running. I don't think I'm running against you. I don't think.
What's the deadline? But I have to make it.
When will you know?
But just to be safe.
We also.
Almost there.
Yeah, can, can we revisit this, this one after?
You can do that as well. It's up to, January is a little more time sensitive than March.
Yeah, let's do that, just because, it'd be stupid to change it now.
They have this January, perfect.
Okay.
All right, and also, just so, we were looking at doing a joint meeting in either May or June, which could be determined at a later time as well, if you like.
Perfect.
Yeah, I would hope we could do it in May, not June. I do have some obligations that I will be out of town for a couple of weeks.
Plus, it'll be advantageous for budget season as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and that'll be well in advance of the budget, so I think May is the best time.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
What day in May are we thinking?
We were looking at piggybacking on our May meeting. So that would be May 12th.
And if it, if there's a lot of items to discuss, then you would let us know so that we could do a Saturday workshop or something if we have a lot of things to discuss.
All these things could be subject to your, your discretion, and however you would like to change it, you could.
Perfect.
Good.
I don't care. I wouldn't either, but you.
All right.
Woodrow's like, not applicable, not applicable.
Yeah, nay.
Okay, so, so we do have, do we have to redo the motion?
You need a motion for January?
Motion to move January, the January 13th meeting to January 8th.
Sorry, you need, you need to adopt all of the board dates by motion.
Okay.
Motion to adopt all of the board dates with the exception of March 10th. We will reset at a later date. But March 13th is being moved to March 8th, or January 8th, January 13th to January 8th. Golly.
I got you, though, okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for all of that, and a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item on discussion and consideration is the consideration and approval of inter-local agreement between the CRA and Solid Waste. Mr. Tac?
And everybody's free the benefit of time. I'm going to go into rapid mode here.
Yes, yes.
On October 8th, we are awarded a full funding request of $75,000 for the demolition of the inn at Boynton here. So we have that award, and we are looking for approval for the inter-local agreement.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All right, I was just going to read the whole thing. That's okay. Motion to approve the 2025-2026 inter-local agreement between Boynton Beach CRA and Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County, and authorize the board chair to execute the inter-local agreement.
Second.
We do have a motion to approve the 2025 inter-local agreement between Boynton Beach CRA and Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County, and authorize the board chair to execute the inter-local agreement. Do, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item for discussion and consideration is the consideration of an inter-local agreement between CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for funding beautification technician positions. Mr. Tac?
All right, per the fiscal year '26 budget adoption, the CRA board approved $147,000 to fund two beautification technicians. The item before you tonight is the inter-local agreement to reimburse the city for those two positions.
Motion to approve the inter-local agreement between the CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for the funding the beautification technician CRA positions.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item for discussion and consideration is the consideration of an inter-local agreement between CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for funding code enforcement officers. Mr. Tac?
I might get a little redundant here, but per the fiscal year '26 budget adoption, the CRA board approved $308,965 to fund four code enforcement officers. The item before you is the inter-local agreement to reimburse the city for those positions.
Awesome. Motion to approve the inter-local agreement between the CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for funding the code enforcement officers. I remember bringing this up a long time ago, and I'm really excited for this. That's it.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And the motion passes unanimously, and I love that motion. Okay. The next item for discussion and consideration is the consideration of inter-local agreement between CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for the engineering project manager. Mr. Tac?
Again, in accordance with the fiscal year budgeting adoption, the CRA board approved $160,000, again, for a engineer project manager. This is the inter-local agreement to reimburse the city for that position. And it's my understanding the city should be pretty close to actually hiring and securing that position here shortly, hopefully, all fingers crossed. The item before you is the inter-local agreement to reimburse the city for that position.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the inter-local agreement between the CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for the engineer project manager. Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, the next item for discussion and consideration is the consideration of an inter-local agreement between CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for funding BBPD video surveillance cameras. Mr. Tac?
As a part of the fiscal year '26 budget adoption, the CRA board approved $60,000 to fund video surveillance cameras. to fund video surveillance cameras. This, the item before the board is the interlocal agreement to reimburse the city for the procurement of those cameras.
Motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for funding BBPD video surveillance cameras.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. And we are moving on to H, which we added for the Fourth Amendment to Purchase and Development Agreement.
I will continue with the rapid-fire theme, but based on Saturday's workshop, the consensus of the board at that time was to reach out to the developer of this, of this parcel to address a parking issue wherein local businesses were concerned that the amount of construction and other personnel parking at the site were interrupting their ordinary commercial businesses. We were able to coordinate with the developer and their attorney over the weekend and so are bringing before you the Fourth Amendment to the Purchase and Development Agreement. Very simply, it allows the purchaser to designate 30 spots for the exclusive use of their tenants and enforce it as they see fit through signage, towing, fees and vouchers, similar mechanisms. Basically, it's their baby to enforce, they can pick the 30 spots. So most of this parking will remain open to the public, but it's a step towards protecting the commercial uses.